Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for Monday, May the 11th. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call to establish the quorum?
David Mitchell?
Here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
Mickey Schneider?
Here.
Terry McClellan?
Here.
Joyce Elder?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
We have six.
Stand and pledge allegiance please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or any changes or anything? All right, all those in favor, sing five, saying aye. Everybody get a copy of the minutes and get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, corrections? If not, all those in favor approving the minutes, sing five, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have one new, whoops.
Yeah, can I speak to that committee now or can I ask a question?
Okay, on which one?
Well, we have three people applying for committees and I know that everybody here knows all of them, but I don't, I'm the new person here.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion that we don't approve these three until our next meeting so that I have the opportunity to come back.
On one, we won't, we will do that, we can do that on each one of them.
Okay.
You can go ahead and make that motion at any time. On planning, we have a new applicant, Tom Buford, and Tom is actually here tonight. Tom, would you want to come up and introduce yourself briefly?
Yes, my name is Tom Buford. I'm not quite here very good back in the old days of last year, but I'm from East Cock, I'm very near Dogwood Ridge. Took me a while to get all my pocket and new snuggers out, so I moved here and kind of settled in and I just wanted to kind of get to know everybody here and thought one way to get to know everybody was to get involved in some of the civic affairs and so I put an application in for the planning commission. Any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
And we also have his phone number on there if y'all want to call him later on in the discussion.
Just wait, what was most of your background, your work history?
I'm an attorney by profession. I worked for HUD and LROCK for five years, practiced law there for about 15 more years, worked for First Federal Saving Loan for five years, moved east to Arkansas, lived there 22 years and raised cows and goats and held hay and then started practicing law again part-time, mostly by email now. And it's mostly all related to multi-family housing, that's most of my background.
Ah, got it, thank you.
Background.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank y'all.
We'll be bringing his application up at our next meeting that we meet at, so.
He's not the one we got for the last meeting?
No, this is brand-new applicant that we got in.
Thank you for coming.
That was HDA at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and this is for planning commission. And we do have two applicants for parks and I think you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I guess the motion is to postpone the vote on these until our next meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a-
Okay, they've both been on for a really long time.
Oh, I said I don't know either one of them.
Okay. And it says at the bottom, it says your council members will contact here and I haven't had the opportunity.
And we don't really do unless it's somebody that's been out there.
Yeah.
I have a question about this, I mean, considering the way parks is organized with their own legislation and their own revenue stream, do they have input like the CAPC does to the people that are nominated? Because the CAPC insists that they should do their own nominating.
They're not quite set up the same way as the CAPC.
Not quite, okay.
But these people have been on the, on the planning, around the parks for several years.
Well, yeah, okay.
Mr. DeVito?
Just a point of clarification, that's state ordinance that the CAPC nominates their own members and then they're approved by council?
Well, yeah, I just wondered whether parks sort of assumed that they had the same-
I just wanted to make it clear that wasn't just our local CAPC doing that.
I know, I know, I just didn't know what parks mindset was on who could nominate, who's out on parks.
They have an input in here and of course Bill Featherstone has been chairman for several years and very active and for instance, Sturt's also been very active lately too. So anyway, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And it looks like we also do have a vote for Ronnie Fanning for HDC.
Motion to approve Mr. Fanning for HDC.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussions? All those in favor, sing five, saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved. That's all that we have and for our commissions reports, we'll have a report on hospital later on in our meeting, so now we'll enter into our public comments. And first up is Randall Christie.
Thank you, I appreciate you letting me speak and I'll be very brief. Regardless of how this vote goes tomorrow, I just want to say that I would like to offer my services to this town, I love the town and I'm committed to the town and if there's anything I can do to help heal this deep division and the deep wound that is in this town right now, I would be glad to offer my services in so doing. I also want to mention that I've been portrayed as a bigot, it's not true, I have gay employees, I have gay patrons and customers, I even have gay financial supporters and by the way, they're still supporting me because they understand the reason I've been opposed to this law and I want to share those three things real quickly with you. This law is, it has paragraphs in it that deliberately attack church and ministries and it's been told many, many times that that's not true, but it is true. And first of all, if it exempted churches, there would not be a paragraph, which is section 7.6507, paragraph I, that describes the appropriate use of church facilities. If it exempted churches, then there would not be a paragraph, 7.6507, section, paragraph F, that describes and regulates the hiring practices of churches. If this exempted churches, it would not in 7.6507, paragraph G, say that a party or minister that refused to perform a wedding of other religions, which might include same-sex weddings, it may include atheistic weddings or any other kind of wedding, if that minister refuses to participate in that, he must provide the burden of proof as to why he's prohibited by his denomination in doing so. Well, for instance, myself, there are no prohibitions in my denomination on what I choose to do and that's the way most evangelical pastors are and I just want to point that out, plus that is unconstitutional to require a defendant to provide the burden of proof and any basic first-year law student knows that. And then the last thing I want to do is I would like to go on record and point out that several individuals of this council have expressed publicly that you oppose the existence of the great passion play. And if that's true, I hope that the majority of the people in Eureka Springs do not feel that way. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. Laura Coker?
My name is Laura Coker, my phone number is 479-244-7204 and I ask anyone and everyone to make that freely available as my services are free, they ain't cheap, but they're free. So council, thank you for your time, my fellow citizens, this is my now two minutes and 45 second window to speak to the population without any censorship and I value it immensely. So I don't think there are any in America now that doubt that global climate change is real, we've had it all this weekend and I'm here to tell you that it is certainly multiple combinations, but it appears that someone has weaponized Tesla technology and as part of the World War III by other means, America has clearly been under attack. So that's being remedied, all of the federal and state forces are working on getting that remedy and this particular town is sitting on prime location. It's a, it's an immense, immensely powerful spiritual place and that's why I hope that you will return it to civility, equality, love and healing and because in our world, that's what's necessary. So fears have been magnified here, you've all been subject to some very serious forces that are really inexplicable or unexplainable at this time, but I've surveyed a number of people, I do listen, and they describe a climate of fear, so let's go back to the sort of blacklisting. I'm told if certain people get together as employers and blacklist someone, they will never get a job in this town again. And you have an exodus of employees right now, really qualified, now with your change-up every year, those people get rotated and so what you have informally done is cross-trained effectively, a lot of people in a lot of different positions with enormous skill. And I mentioned Crescom International, of which I am one graduate, as a means of educating and assisting employers, but that's just another option. I mentioned that being a sister city to Sacramento, Sacramento, California, might open up some venues, we have prisoners' rights groups, we have a strong-
Let's start wrapping it up.
Okay.
Time goes by quick.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Call me, please.
Thank you. And that's the end of our public comments. Let me see there. Our first order of business is discussion of May 25th meeting date, have a motion to discuss.
So moved, second.
All right. May 25th meeting is on, is it Memorial Day?
Yes.
It's in Monday, so.
Oh, considering our lack of agenda items lately, I wouldn't be opposed to simply canceling the 25th date.
Second.
That's what I was going to say.
There was a motion, I take it?
Yeah, that was a motion, I'll motion it.
Discuss.
Mr. McClellan?
Just an addendum to that, there has been a request, there is a parade that day, I don't know what parade, and they have requested the city council to attend and ride in a car as a group.
Is it bolted?
I don't think anybody's going to shoot at James, you're not that aboard.
In my own mind, I am.
Well, that's your mind, unless you're going to shoot yourself, I wouldn't worry about it. So anyway, meet at the time of the village at one and pile in and go for a ride.
Pile in one, Volkswagen, like a clown?
When, where?
It may be, it may be where we need to be.
Well, all right, first of all, let's talk about this.
I just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just throwing that in as a good opportunity.
Do we have any, and any further discussion?
On meeting or not? Not parade cancelling?
Canceling.
On canceling the meeting date, yes. If not, all in favor of canceling the meeting date, sing five, saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved, we'll meet the following June, whatever that is, 6th or something like that.
Eight.
Eight, okay.
Now can we segue into Terry's thing since we're there?
Do we get paid anyhow?
We, beg your pardon, oh, we can catch up on that in a little bit. Get a little motion to update on the hospital.
So moved, second.
All right, I will, there's, I have not been able to get in touch with Chris, but I have been talking to other people involved with that. The project is still moving on, they're still active, they have hired a project manager to work along with the architects to come down with trying to finalize the cost and getting the budget figures more in line. And it is a, project manager is kind of like what they had with the school system, so what they're doing now is getting the cost more accurate and they're also trying to get where they're being able to cite the project on Miles Mountain on the land, they haven't closed on the land yet, yes, sir?
I assume that, this is an assumption, that you're getting information from the Morrisons, I don't know that, but.
Yes.
But any idea timeframe-wise when they think with this training, this person on board, they've been, they've been involved in this process for over two months.
Yeah, and it takes a while, I know that, you know, it's a process that takes a while on there, but I have no idea on the time schedule, I wasn't able to get that out of anybody. Chris is probably the only one that can really come up. I was supposed to be able to talk to the project manager and I didn't get a chance to talk to him today. Yes, sir?
My reason for this questioning is because as we go into the refunding, which is our next point, you know, there are other avenues that, you know, are interested in financing our water and sewer projects and so, I mean, it'd be nice to know what the timeframe is so we can, you know, we can put our feeters out in those directions and see where we are under the gun, but I guess we can discuss that in the next point.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir?
It's nice to hear that, but just because the project manager and architects are getting the numbers down, there is a tremendous amount of financial work still to do unless they're going to pay for it cash or unless they already have a financial institution that's backed them up for X number of dollars and they're trying to match it. So there's, there's a lot more work to do, which brings up Terry's point quite well. When we had the bond people here and were discussing that and they said there was a timeframe coming up that we could, and we could potentially look at and all, I hope that doesn't pass and put us in a bind in any way in the future of being able to run that sewer out there, but I do, I do understand what all they have to go through yet, having built a hospital just before I came here. I'm kind of surprised at this drawn-out, convoluted way they're going at it, it seems almost like a buying time, but you know what, I guess the proof will be if we see the hospital.
Well, everything that I've heard has been more positive on there. When Mr. McClellan was talking about other revenues or other sources for funding, he and I spent some time down in Little Rock and we just talked with an agency down there that would be willing to loan us some money at a rate a lot cheaper actually than bond issues, so, and they were very excited about trying to get active up here. So I think we've got some alternatives there. But again, it's, you know, we've got, you know, it is, we need to be, we need to have the information as soon as possible so we can go ahead and plan what our revenue sources are going to be for the sewer, because it is, you know, we're going to have to do it. And we can, and we can do it, we just have to figure out when's the best time to do it. Yes, sir?
Again, the one thing about that is the fact is that the city will be, would be out of the hospital business, a private entity takes it over, it's their business, their land, their money, we just run some sewer out there, that's what we'd be at risk for. And to get a new hospital, it's worth running the sewer out there, there's no doubt, that's not even a question, but for us to pony up or get back in any way into that business would not be wise, so it would be much better to go private.
Sure. Any other comments, questions? All right, which does bring us back into our next order of business, which is the refunding of the water and sewer bonds, can I have a motion to discuss?
So moved, second.
Most of y'all have been involved with refinancing bond issues, have they come up before, from Stevens? They're always, I have to say, they have paid a lot of attention to us and stay on top of where we are with our bond issues. This is something that Dennis Hunt normally was a person who was in charge of municipal bonds, he's been elevated up in, to Stevens', I think he is now in charge of maybe the entire state for municipalities. Beau Biddle is going to be our new representative and he sent us this letter and as you'll note, basically what this was, and I wanted to bring it up to the council, to be able to look at this as a resolution and see and make sure that y'all were comfortable with it and be able to have him appear before us, possibly at our next meeting, and he can discuss this more in detail. But we have the savings, I think of approximately $69,000, I think is what he was saying, $63,000 annually by doing a new bond issue on here. And I think what he's doing is basically combining possibly the 2008 and 2010. And it may be, as Mr. McClellan was talking about, and maybe this is something we can talk to him about too, was to see what the status was, if we need to, if we wanted to look at doing the sewer line under a bond issue. I wouldn't, on the council, I think y'all brought this up last year, did some research and I guess, did y'all talk with Stevens?
They sat right over there.
On there. And it was probably with Dennis Hunt at that point in time, but I think this is a good time for us to, to bring him in and we can talk and bring him up to date even more so on where we are. So I don't know whether we need to go ahead and vote on this resolution, but it's a start to make sure that we are committed, at least looking into it. It's no commitment, but it does allow us to proceed forward. Yes, sir, Mr. Christie?
There again, I think the big question from them is, is the window of opportunity, he's got on here, 9/1 is a refunding date, delivery date, and that's kind of what we were talking about before, that when we were at the hospital and that was, you know, trying to get everything ready so we could make a move, and they were ready to make a move in the fall of this year. And, you know, either through the bonding company or the state agency that we spoke with, I mean, chances are we'll be able to get the money. So I, you know, I think, I think we're on board, but we can't, we can't move.
Yeah.
And, and I certainly don't want to refinance and pay 60-some thousand dollars or whatever it is, it looks like, you know, to the bonding company now and then have to go pay, pay it again down the road for some, you know, whenever, to refinance it, to do the additional. So, you know, about, not to say that it would be an all-inclusive thing, that may be a separate, have to be a separate unit all on its own, I don't know, but that's, I guess that's what we've got to find out.
Mickey?
Yeah, when we talked about this before, the understanding was that this year we would be eligible to redo bonds, so we would have money to bond out to lay the sewer lines for the hospital. And I agree with Terry, I'm not going to sit there and approve spending money twice to get something done. And while the resolution should be read tonight because it's not a final commitment, it just gets the ball rolling and we'll save the interest rates at this rate, but if we could have the guy at the next meeting in a month, that would be awesome because then we can find out if we could tie in this refinancing and the new one, if there's any way we can tie it in or whatever.
David, do you have a?
No, I'm not, I'm not interested in doing anything tonight until I hear from the person to have a chance to ask questions.
Is there any way we can nudge the hospital into having more information for us in a month?
Well, we can try, I mean, we've been nudging, but I can see if I can, because it is, in a sense, time is of the essence for us too with the sewer and financing the sewer.
Well, what is our, well, can I say, window of opportunity for financing what we have now for this that we're considering?
Fall of this year?
Do we have a time limit on making up our mind on this?
That's why we need to see, Mr. McClellan.
Yeah, well, let's, let's go ahead and just get a motion to have him show up at the next meeting.
So moved, second.
Okay, now then we, I mean, and then, now we can have him show up and discuss and tell us what the time limit is. I don't think we're going to be, you know, I know there's a window of opportunity there with, with the interest rates, the bankers always looking at that, but, you know, I don't know what it is, so he's the main one that can give us more information and then also I can try to get more information from Chris at that point in time too and see what their schedule's like. Mr. McClellan?
Just to say, I don't see anything there that, that doesn't say anything about the interest rates being, you know, we're not being tied to anything in here anyway, so.
Right, yeah, it doesn't hold us to anything, it would just get things rolling.
And, you know, and it may be by the time, if we add a million dollars on to, you know, the bond, we, our interest, I mean, we may not be saving that, that money, I don't know, I don't know what the impact is on that, you know, that's a question for him, which is something we need to know so we can look at other alternative funding sources too. Mr. DeVito?
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, it has a debt service schedule, is that a debt service schedule on the new rate or the old rate? And I'd like comparables as to what our total payout is over the life of the bond issue that we're presently engaged in and then what the total payout over the life of the bond issue is under the new interest rate, because, well, I'm seeing debt service schedule, is there two debt service schedules?
If you flip it over, it has new and old.
Oh, okay, thank you. There it is.
This interest rate of 2.7, does, is this going to hold for a while? Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
I'm not sure how long it would hold, to be honest with you, I don't know.
Okay, well, there, there is so much happening on the national financial scene at the moment that who knows a month from now, there may be no place to put your money except municipal bonds, so.
I mean, if you look at this over the, you know, paying out in '27, they say $40,000, $40,000 for the refinancing over the life of the bond, so, you know, $40,000 over, you know, the next 12 years.
That's a lot of roadwork.
Yeah. Something to consider, I mean, it's another factor that we can consider.
Any further comments?
Yes, sir.
Do we know what rating our bonds get? B, A?
I want to say A, but I don't know for sure. Pretty sure it's A. Not yet. Still discussing. Any other comments? All right. All in favor of having Mr. Biddle show up at our next meeting and discuss this? Say if I'm saying aye. Any opposed? All right, so moved. All right, that brings us to our agenda setting. Joyce?
No, I don't have anything to put on the agenda.
Okay. Mickey?
Nope.
Or should you say him and David?
Well, I'll keep the trend going.
James?
Not there.
No, sir.
Nope.
All right. How about comments? Bob?
Always first.
Well, yeah, we're going to reverse it here.
Well, the comment I have, you know, pertains to what was said earlier regarding 2223 and the fact that it's not a perfect law. If you look at the Constitution of the United States, it's been amended, you know, more than 20 times. Obviously, it wasn't perfect, but fortunately, they passed it, you know, when it was put up to a vote. Otherwise, we'd all be out waving our flags and welcoming our new little baby princess, saying hell to the queen. So, you know, it's not like you can't vote down 2223 and then fix it. If you vote it down, you lose the opportunity to have the law. So I would encourage everybody who hasn't voted to get out tomorrow and vote and pass 2223 and then, you know, in the future, we can look at it and make changes as necessary. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. McClellan?
Yeah. In reference to the ordinance 2223, you know, vote your heart, one way or the other. That's fine. My comment is this, and that is, you know, the first of February this year, Eureka Springs, you could have had a sign at the city limits that said, you know, "City of Love and Tolerance." But with that council meeting, when this ordinance was written and approved, it divided this town wide open. And it's really hurting me deeply because, you know, if you wanted to do something positive with the town of Eureka Springs, it would have been to use it as a model, you know, how we treated one another here and have for years and how we have grown in this process. And instead, split it. People lost jobs, you know, it's just been sickening to me. It really has. And the influence from outside of the city, excuse me, outside of the city limits on both sides, it's just the whole thing has just been nothing but stink. That's all I have.
Thanks, Terry. James?
This didn't start with ordinance 2223. If it started anywhere, it started with the Domestic Partnership Registry. I remember it quite well, and I think most people remember it quite well. It brought in the American Family Association, it brought in outside forces, they drove around town with disgusting murals painted on the sides of large trucks, confronted us in Basin That's been there for a number of years. What 2223 does is it brings civil rights to all the people that call Eureka Springs Won't comment on Mr. Christie's comments, they've been discussed ad nauseam. I thank the pro 2223 forces, which are all members of this community. We did not bring in any outside forces. To the contrary, American Family Association, the Black Robe Regiment have poured thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars into this campaign to do what? To drive a wedge in the community, and that's unfortunate. I can speak with authority that the people that are in favor of 2223 have stuck to the facts of the issue. In no way is any minister forced to conduct any ceremonies that they do not want to do. That is also guaranteed by the Constitution. There's been a lot of hearsay, a lot of innuendo, and a lot of outright lies perpetrated by the against forces in this community, and I find that most unsettling. I think we can stand proudly that it was passed by this council, embraced by the community, and it will show forth tomorrow when people vote for truth, honor, and love in this community. And that's what Eureka Springs is about. People have come into this community and brought their agendas into this town, and I resent that. To take back Eureka Springs is not who we are. We live here, this is our community. The people in the LGBT community are our friends, they're our coworkers, they're our bosses, they're our staffs, they're the people we love, respect, and honor in this community. And they deserve the equal treatment that everybody at this table and everybody in this community should be receiving. And that's what this ordinance is all about. It's about fair and equitable treatment to everybody who calls Eureka Springs home. This is an issue that should be embraced by everybody, and I encourage everybody to exercise your constitutional prerogative and vote tomorrow in favor of ordinance 2223. Thank you.
Thank you. You've heard a lot of passion, a lot of truth about this issue. It's been going on now for a good while. I think the good people of this city know in their heart of hearts why this council, on the night it did, brought forth the nondiscrimination ordinance 223. They know the reasons behind it, and they know the reasons exactly why we did three readings that night. It's because it was in the Senate, it was going to come out, and it was going to go to the governor, and the governor was not on record saying that he was not going to sign it. Therefore, the window for Eureka Springs to stand up for equality, fairness, diversity, everything this town has stood for for multiple years was in play that night. And we passed it. But for somebody also then to turn around and stand up there and say that there are members on this council that don't want the Passion Play is absolutely the most fallacious thing I have ever heard of in my life. I am the gay council member on this group. I have a bed and breakfast. I'm also a short timer here in Eureka Springs. I've only been here seven years. I have a wonderful little B&amp;B here, and on my webpage, under Things to Do, I have a host section about the Great Passion Play, what a wonderful thing it is to do. This last Thursday, Friday, I had people that drove all the way to be at my bed and breakfast to go to the Passion Play on Friday to spend the whole day out there. They absolutely loved it, the weather cleared up, and they even got to go to the play that night. Now, I don't get a lot, obviously, of people come directly for the Passion Play, but a lot of them that get here go on and go out there. So for somebody to stand up there and elude that there's people on this council that don't believe in the Great Passion Play is the most bunk I have ever heard of. It's as divisive as Take Back Eureka. When you have the guts to say, "Take Back Eureka," you have drawn a line in the sand and you're not a friend and a neighbor.
Mr. Snodgrass?
Yeah, if he moves away. Lived in this town for 41 years. I have seen two things totally divide this town. The first incident was the threat of the baby Jesus from the Basin Park Christmas display, and that ripped this town to shreds. The second thing, question of who. I love the both, it's one I just think they're just too late. Think about it. Two things have caused outsiders to try to tear this town apart. The DPR that called for equality and ordinance 2223 that calls for equality. When the state deemed it necessary to lie to the people of the state and say, "We don't want to allow cities to pass anti-discrimination laws because we want one law, the state law, to be covering all the towns." Well, there is no state law because Arkansas, in its brilliance and tying in with the racial impact of the 50s, chose to not ratify all of the Constitution. The state does not have any discrimination laws that cover everybody and everything, the same kind of equality that most of Euricans have been fighting 50-plus years for. As I said at the last meeting, humans are humans. I don't care who you are, what type you are, what you wear, what you look like, how you act, you're a freaking human being. That makes you as equal as anybody else. When you have a group of people sitting there saying that we are coming up with new classes of people, I challenge you on that because it's people who want discrimination, who do not want equality, who have come up with classes that are now having to be federally covered. Women, blacks, old, poor. You people came up with the classes. We came up 50-plus years ago with equality for all human beings. In this 5-million-page letter that we all got a few days ago, or at least I'm assuming most of us got, you sit there and you say, "We deliberately passed this law." Now, this is, I'm going to quote the whole short little paragraph. "If Eureka lawmakers," that's us, "wanted to be subject to the Constitution, they would not have passed this law because it is unconstitutional for so many reasons." First, I'd like to know the unconstitutionality of equality. Then they say, "They deliberately did this in order to create lawsuits." Really? Oh, my God. All of you here at this table, how hard have I been fighting to sue the freaking state over fluoride? How many of our people have said, "Please, go after the state in regards to fluoride"? A simple lawsuit that we are guaranteed to win, and y'all wouldn't do it. And then you guys want to sit there and say, "We did this in order to have lawsuits"? Give me a break. Turn your brains on. I just, ugh, there are so many things. I have little red lines all over this whole thing. But the biggest thing that this is going to come down to, and I'll even leave all my little red lines, the biggest thing this comes down to is the Passion Play. On all these 5-million pages, Passion Play, Passion Play, Passion Play. When I moved here 41 years ago, and the play had started in '68, we had a five-month season. That was when the play was open, Memorial Weekend through Halloween Weekend. Everybody did the play, and you worked three jobs because you were laid off for seven months. I loved the play. I was thrilled to be a part of the play. I loved it so much that when I was super extremely pregnant with my second son, my marine, he was almost born, right there in the middle of the crucifixion scene. That's how much I love the play. His wife and his children have come out to see where he was almost born. If they hadn't gotten me out of there in time, the Via Della Rosa would have had more than a crucifixion happen. That's how much I love the play. All of us here do. What this whole incident has turned into is a humongous promotional item for the Passion Play. All I've been hearing is opening weekend, it has been huge. It's the best in a million years, yada, yada. Yeah? And whose sweat, tears, and back has this written on? Everybody you want to discriminate against. This was the perfect opportunity for outsiders to come in and cause a situation through lies, innuendo, name-calling, and quite a few other things that, yes, you have been caught at. This is ridiculous, it's pathetic. Euricans love each other. I don't care how much we fight, scream, and holler, we are the first ones to help out in a crisis. You can't say that about anywhere else in this country. When we want to have equality and fairness, why should anyone, much less churches or Christians, fight against treating human beings as human beings as Christ taught us? You really need to rethink all of these lies that they are throwing out there, and yes, they are lies, in regard to laws and hiring and firing. It's so much BS, it's unbelievable. It's a damn promo that's free of charge because all the news people are carrying it all across the country. It's their promo, they're getting freebies out of this at our expense. That's it.
So?
Well, we've taken up enough time in this. I just wish that the rest of the world, you know, we get along just fine. We're family, this town. We love each other, we get along. Yeah, we have disagreements, but we get them all settled. It's the people from outside. Maybe if we pass this, if we hold up this ordinance tomorrow, maybe this will put an end to the outside assaults, and maybe the rest of the world will just go away and leave us alone. And that would just thrill me to death. And that's all I have to say.
I second that.
Thank you all for your comments. I really wasn't going to say anything, but, you know, this, Mr. McClellan hit on it. It really hurts me, and I know it hurts the council members and a lot of the other city members. This has split the city up. It's almost, I mean, we're talking about civil rights, and it's almost been like a civil war. It's taken family members against family members, churches against churches. It hadn't been fun, and I think it's been necessary. As has been pointed out, this ordinance isn't perfect. There's things in it that I think we can all look at. If it passes, we can look at and make changes. That's part of the whole process of ordinances. No matter what happens tomorrow, we're going to be in for a long healing process, I think, and I think it's going to depend upon all of us to hold our hands out and reach out and recognize that we are a close family, we're a close city. We're only a town of, you know, over 2,000 people. And I think it's important to remember that, you know, our neighbors are, still are going to be our neighbors, and I think that's important. No matter what happens tomorrow, one side's going to win, one side's going to lose. But I hope, and I think we will, stand proud in whatever that result is. All right, going on to some positive issues. Besides noting, as everybody's commented, that tomorrow's voting up at the Catholic Church, voting point. May the 15th, the Loving Every Minute Show at the Auditorium begins. And for all the locals, Friday the 15th and Saturday the 16th is free admission for all the locals and workers of Eureka Springs. Also, the 20th and 21st, which I think is a Wednesday and Thursday. So if you have to work Friday and Saturday, you can come back on Wednesday and Thursday. And again, that's free for all the citizens of Eureka Springs to come down and see. And it's going to be a show like we've never seen before. I can pretty much guarantee that. Also, on the 15th, our famous White Street Walk begins. Looking forward to that. Then the 15th through the 17th, we have a publishing workshop at The Village, which is a writing school. The 16th, we have Love Letters performances at Main Stage at 3:00 p.m. On the 16th, Gallery Stroll at 6:00 p.m. Sunday, the 17th... Sunday, the 17th, our annual Books in Bloom up at the Crescent Gardens, and if you've never been, that's a wonderful time to go up and, and meet some nationally-known authors that we have, and also some local authors. It's always a great time up there. The 22nd, 21st through the 23rd, our annual Mustang Weekend. Also, on the 23rd, we'll have Art in the Park at the Basin Park from 11:00 to 6:00 P.M. May the 23rd, the May Festival Music in Basin Park from 12:00 to 5:00. And then again, on Saturday, the 23rd, will be the Gallery Stroll from 6:00 to 9:00. On the 24th, we'll have a show, The Touch of Opera in the Ozarks, at the Auditorium at 2:00 P.M. And if you've never seen opera, here's a chance to see a professional show, professional show done by our own opera in the Ozarks. February 25th, Veterans Memorial Day Parade at 2:00 P.M. Beg your pardon?
February?
February. Sorry, May, I'm sorry, I don't know where I came up with February, thank you. And I was thinking Terry for some reason, I don't know why, Terry made me think of February. It's his fault.
I'll take it away for it, it's all right.
Yeah, and what I'm saying about him reminding the council members to go up and ride in the parade, on, be up there at 1:00 at Pine Mountain, that is where they're going to start at. 29th will be the ribbon cutting for the Up Project down on Main Street at 5:30. That's exciting, they've done a wonderful job on that.
Friday, not Saturday?
It's 29th.
Oh, I marked it wrong, okay.
I don't know which day that is.
It's a Friday. At what time?
5:30.
Okay, yeah, I've got the wrong date, though.
And the 30th, 31st, the 10th Annual Exterra Festival, and then again, the Gallery Stroll on the 30th at 6:00 P.M. And then June 6th, we'll be drumming in the park. And that's all I have, quite a bit for May, so.
That's good, Jerry.
So, have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.